Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's six o'clock and welcome to the Monday, May the 20th, regular meeting of District 882 Monticello School Board. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome, we have a full boardroom this evening with a lot of very proud parents and students here that we're going to honor tonight. We want to move first to approve our tentative agenda to be our complete agenda for the evening.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five, uh, six zero, sorry. We have no citizens' comments this evening. We have, for those of you that follow our agenda regularly, we have rearranged our agenda a little bit because some of the students that are with us tonight have to leave relatively early to get to yet another activity. They're all very high flyers and high performers, so we want to make sure that they get to that choir concert rehearsal on time so that they can make their activity this evening. So this evening, we have a lot of student recognition. This is probably one of the most fun meetings that we have all year long in the spring that where we get to celebrate the accomplishments of our graduating seniors who have receiving a special awards. And so I'd like to invite Principals Matt Colwell and Lori Hansen, Matt Colwell, to the podium to recognize our students this year.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome to everyone. You're missing the questions at her front.
When I left the high school, just pulling out now, just twenty minutes ago, I saw lacrosse, girls lacrosse, who does have a number of students we want to recognize today, but I saw they were up eleven, no, thirteen zero at half. So we've got, I didn't see who the opponent was, but they were doing very well as well. And I think we've got about four or five girls who are on the lacrosse team that should be here this evening as well. It's a true privilege. It's a testament to our community, to parents, right? This is a fun evening, like Ms. Zbarth just said, to be able to celebrate. It's a, it's not at all reflective of just the high school, right? I mean, there's a lot of years of hard work that you guys have put in, students being recognized now, kind of as a number of you get to your, your final waning days. But we know that you've put in years and years and years of effort and work and diligence, and that is not something we can take lightly. I just saw an email come through, right now the middle school is picking their magic leaders, and I bet a number of you are magic leaders in the middle school, like those characteristics just continue on over the years. So I think we've got like six or seven groups of students here, some small, some big. I just mentioned one of them, I'm gonna need you when you come on up to kind of take this route, and she said, I'm going up? Like, yeah, you're gonna come on up. We're gonna, we're gonna bring you to the front, and we'll talk a little bit about each one of these groups. So we're gonna start with two juniors who have been awarded an Excel Award. And so if I could get Catherine Lemke, who actually is at lacrosse, and Tyler Gru, come on up here. You can kinda, where do we want him to stand? Want to put him up front here? Okay, so Tyler. And he doesn't quite know which way to face, right? Do you face the audience or the board?
Look at your parents.
He's, he's one of two juniors who was getting awarded with the Excel Award, which comes from the Minnesota State High School League, and it's given, it stands for Excellence in Community Education and Leadership. It's a unique recognition program designed exclusively for high school juniors who are involved in fine arts, activities, athletics. There are leaders in their school, and they've demonstrated a strong commitment to community service and volunteerism. And they actually get nominated through the Activities Department. So Tyler is a junior. We'll be seeing him again next year, thankfully, right? We got more we want to tap into there, but obviously, it's a big deal, two juniors being selected for this award, and Catherine Lemke on the lacrosse field right now as well. So if you see her, please let her know we were talking about her.
We'll get pictures of each of the groups and...
Oh, you're just gonna be stuck with me, huh?
You're a small group. We could go by a normal end, but some of the groups are gonna be pretty big, so I think we'll just...
Second group I'd like to bring up are what we call our Boys and Girls State. So if I could have Aloysius Thompson and actually Willa Sharma. Willa is on the lacrosse field, so Aloysius, get up here. You're by yourself.
I'll stand by you.
Yeah. Aloysius, or A.T. as we call him, is also a junior. He's been nominated, along with Willa, as two juniors who are going to participate in Boys and Girls State this summer. That's an American Legion-sponsored program where they will go to St. John's and Bethel respectively. Boys go to St. John's, girls to Bethel for a week this summer. They were nominated by their his, the History Department because they've shown a real propensity for, a real celebration and interest in government and civics. And so over the summer, they'll be in a program down in those two colleges respectively for a full week, studying civics, citizenship. They're gonna be actually electing different roles in the government, whether it's a state, county, or a state or a city level, and he gets to participate in that. And then next year, he will also work with myself and Willa to plan the Veterans Day program for the high school. So he's been nominated by the History Department, and it's kind of a big deal because there's just two juniors that have been nominated for this particular award. So congratulations. All right, our next four seniors are our Students of Excellence. And so if I could get Isabella, Adrian, Trevor, and Sophie on up here. So we have Isabel Angel, Adrian Hansen, Trevor Koenig, and Sophie Roche. Doesn't look like we have Trevor here, but... I think it was April 24th, Mr. Olson, myself, and their parents were at a banquet in St. Cloud. Couple of you were, I think Trevor and Sophie, or Trevor and Adrian were out of town on that social studies trip. But they are our Students of Excellence. They were nominated by all high school staff as students who have excelled academically. They've shown leadership skills, a real sense of community. The descriptor here is they're an exemplary role model to fellow students, and they make a difference in the lives of fellow students and staff in the community. So they are very, very active throughout a number of ways at the high school, whether it's activities, day-to-day things. You'll see a couple of them as TTA's. You'll see a couple of them. Bella is our morning coffee shop. She brings a lot of smile and joy to a lot of people at the high school on a daily basis. So congratulations. They're all seniors. They're all leaving, unfortunately, but they've done a fantastic job. So again, congratulations. The next, next recognition we want to bring up are our AAA Award winners. So the Minnesota State High School League has what's called the AAA Award. And so if I could have Ashley Lewis and Paul Fazan come on up here. Schools get a chance to nominate a couple of students every year, a boy and a girl, for the AAA Award, and then they go on to compete against other students at the state, at the section and regional level, and then the state level. These two are our two representatives. They are great representatives. The AAA stands for Academics, Arts, and Athletics. And it honors high school seniors throughout the state who have a high GPA average, participate in league-sponsored athletics, and fine arts. So these two shine in many ways throughout the high school, and again, you'd see them involved in many, many things. So two fantastic examples of seniors we're gonna miss and lose, but let's celebrate one more time with them. The next group I would like to bring up is a big group. There's nineteen valedictorians in the class of 2024. So these students all have a 4.0 GPA, all four years, and it's a pretty impressive feat. So let me get the nineteen of them up here in front of you. So Allison Belky, Gabby Cruz Longley, Keegan Ellis, Paul Fazan, Ryland Fearben, Sidney Fuller, Jack Geislinger, Aaron Gilbertson, Adrian Hansen, McKenna Lutz, Lauren Morehouse, Natalie Nemeth, Evan Raski, Gina Schaefer, Dinah Schaefer, Gunnar Simon, Nick Thovson, Ella Vasoli, and Reagan Wan Shafi. All nineteen, please come up. Yeah, yeah, and I don't know, you guys, it's hard to understand, I think, parents, if you had a couple of students go through, you realize the amount of work and attention to detail and diligence at a highly academic level it takes to be a 4.0. But four years of perfection with regard to grades and, and doing all the little things to keep that 4.0. They put a lot, they put a ton of pressure on themselves, probably more than anyone else. Sometimes it's a little unhealthy, but this is a fantastic group. They, they're working on a video right now for graduation. They're gonna be speaking, speaking at graduation via a video, and we're excited for them and what their future brings. So just a fantastic group. Let's give them one more round of applause. Lauren and Natalie were both lacrosse students, so we were missing two of them there. And then our next group are our junior students who are currently on pace to be a valedictorian. So we call them our Junior Honor Guards, and they have a role to play in graduation. So let's get these, there's seventeen of them actually, so we'll have these people come on up. Shane Bukler, Anna Beegler, Allison Shoffins, Danica Cristobal, Summer Derby, Damon Dedel, Tyler Gru, Josie Johnson, Addison Kippeth, Adeline Coker, Catherine Lemke, Braden Ray, Isabella Robinson, Cohen Schlangen, Adley Schultz, Kayla Skeestead, and Aloysius Thompson. Let's have these juniors on up to the front, please. So all those juniors are on pace to be a valedictorian. It's, it's not like they'll fail if they don't get there. It's a lot of pressure. I know they put on themselves, but they too, we had a meeting the other day on Main Street, and I told them, you know, we need you guys at graduation, and they kind of looked at me like, wait, what? You know, I gotta go to graduation, too? Yeah, we, so they will participate in graduation. They will come up and kind of help be the guiding members of the process, and they'll be, we'll recognize them there as well. So fantastic group there. My last group is kind of a special group to us. We, we know there's students going every which direction upon graduation, once they leave Monticello and they've got big plans, and it's, it's really fun to see excitement and the passion, the motivation. They have to go different places. But we want to recognize the eight students that'll be going into the Armed Forces and, and serving the country in some variety. So I know a couple of them couldn't be here, but here are our students going into the military. And I'll just have you come on up here. Jack Geislinger, Jason Jones, Alexander Frelick, Jeremy Medved, Jackson Montgomery, Skylar Ellis, Zach Pew, and Dallas Christensen. If I could get everyone on up here. We just love to see that, that servant mentality. These guys are going places, and they're, they're literally going all across the country. None of them are, you know, just staying in boring old Monticello. They're going places. Jack is, the first one here, he's actually enrolled in West Point, and that's, that's a really big deal through the ROTC, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Jason also is going in the Army, ROTC. Dallas going to the National Guard, believe, right? Skylar's going to the National Guard. Jackson is going out to South Dakota, ROTC, believe, right? Alex going to the National Guard, and, well, Jeremy's not here, I see. And then, who am I missing here? Zach, Air Force. Air Force, right? Where is the Air Force? Where are you going? NDSU. So like I said, all different directions, heading different places, but obviously, super appreciated and respected to be going into the military. Just wanted to take a second and thank them, so appreciate it. So once again, it's, it's, obviously, it's an honor to be in the role that we are, speaking for Ms. Hansen and myself, just with regards to being able to rub shoulders with such high-flying people and quality people that you guys have all raised. We don't take that lightly. They do a great job of leading the high school, and it's great, it's fun. And we wish we could talk more about each individual here, but we would be here a long time. And no, it's, we're trying to strike a balance, obviously, of recognizing the special individuals as groups, but also with what they're doing and where they're going. So I think we're gonna continue through typical, the regular meeting, and then we'll get to our student report in a bit. All right, thank you.
So for those who are here that have other activities they need to go to, please feel free to excuse yourself if you'd like to go. You're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. It's gonna be really interesting. You're gonna miss a lot of good stuff.
This is where you'd love to see the boardroom full, at meeting extra chairs for a good reason.
You weren't important enough to go first. For those that are remaining, you're welcome to redistribute yourself to the front row if you'd like. It's like church. Nobody wants to sit in the front row, so... Oh, thank you. She's brave. Well, thank you, everyone, for your patience and your sense of humor, and for celebrating with us all of these very special young people that are going off to many wonderful opportunities when they leave us in just a couple of short weeks. So we're gonna continue with our agenda. We're gonna get into some kind of less exciting stuff after all of the students, but we need to move to number six, our fiscal stability. This is a consent agenda item. It includes approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, personnel matters, bill summary, monthly summary of all of our bills for the, for the district, and various other things like our P-card, Amazon, and wires. All of the members of the board receive these documents the week prior to the meeting, has a chance to look through them, ask any questions, and so we'll entertain a motion to approve these as a consent agenda group.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to our collaborative connections, this is the section of our agenda where we get yet another opportunity to thank the various, very generous donors in our community who support our students and our various programs with financial and in-kind donations. And so Superintendent Olson is gonna talk about our donations that we have for this meeting.
I'd like to say, even before we begin here today, that some of these donors this time are reaching out further than our local community. So I'll make mention of those once I get there. But Peacemaker donated $2,035 for a project at our Little Mountain Playground. And I know I have Nicole, I talked to Nicole Cartel beforehand, and just, it's a, it's a project that promotes kindness and really pushing in to some training during the recess day to celebrate students and the great things they can do when they're kind to each other. Monticello Rotary Club, $750 for our upcoming Northwest Talent Academy and scholarships for that program, so that we try to break down barriers for people who may have some financial, or need some financial assistance. Our Monticello American Legion donated $1,000 for our ever-popular fishing team sponsorship. Central Minnesota Manufacturing Association donated $500 for the purchase of a 3D printer for the Monticello High School Tech Ed Department. And this is one that extends out there a little, a little ways further than we're used to, but Bill Belichick, yep, Patriot Way, that is the address of this one, donated $10,000 for the girls' lax team. So a grant was filled out. So a grant was filled out by the coaches, and we were the recipient of $10,000. And then Sherburne County Swamp Bucks extending to our neighbor, our county neighbor, Sherburne County, but this is $1,000 for an invite fee for the Anvil 2024 Alex Mogul Memorial Trap Shooting Tournament, so it was so our team could get to a tournament that wasn't on the schedule at the beginning of the year, so they were able to make this happen with that donation. And then the Tom Keating Foundation, $3,000 for the academic support program for athletes. So this is the program that Board Member Seben worked on with Gary Revnik to start out the school year, in preparation to start out the school year, so that we could continue to put an emphasis on academics for all of our athletes, so that we were student-athlete, we were students first and then athletes second. And so that's to support that program. And once again, we're partnering with families and partnering with students as they make their studies, just as important as the sport they love to play, or activity they love to do. And so total donations so far this year, we don't always have this on, but this meeting, this amount will lead into our June meeting where we're gonna celebrate all of our donors and within a reception, but we have, so far to date, we have $178,622. So we have an amazing supportive community to support all the programs that we have here.
And I want to add to that, Superintendent Olson, that anyone who donates to our district and designates it for a specific program, 100% of that money goes to the program, there's no overhead fees, there's nothing skimmed off the top for administration, for the general fund or anything like that. So we try to always honor and respect the wishes of the donor to make sure that that money goes to the program that they have designated it for. And we are incredibly grateful, and in June the 17th of this year, we are gonna have, as Superintendent Olson mentioned, a thank you open to the community from four to, I'm sorry, five to 6:00 PM ahead of our meeting in the gymnasium that's kind of attached out here. And we hope that many people will come and thank our donors alongside of us. So we do have a resolution for the donations for this evening.
If we're be resolved by the Monticello School Board 882 to gratefully accept the following donations, Peacemaker, $2,035, Monticello Rotary Club, $750, Monticello American Legion, $1,000, Central Minnesota Manufacturers Association, $500, Bill Belichick Foundation, $10,000, Sherburne County Swamp Bucks, $1,000, and Tom Keating Foundation, $3,000.
Motion made by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero with our sincere gratitude. Moving on to our resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League, we have Gary Revnik with, is he here?
No, Gary Revnik asked if I could take this one. So I am filling in for Mr. Revnik. But he, every year, this is an action item that we need to bring forward in order, a resolution that we need to bring forward as action, so that we are able to participate in all Minnesota State High School League activities and sports. So this is something that we do every year, and it's a, it allows our athletes and participants to participate in programs that are offered, which, with the programs, not only do you get the programs, but you get the state, you get the section play, you get the state tournament, and all the different accolades that go with each program. So it's, I think, a well-valued service for our participants and athletes.
And so we have a resolution for that as well.
Resolved that the governing body or entity of Monticello School District Number 882, located in the state of Minnesota, delegates the control supervision, supervision regulation of inter-scholastic activities and athletics to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies the State Commission of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes.
So all of those in favor of renewing our participation in the Minnesota State High School League for the next school year 2425, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero, and we will win all the tournaments.
Kathy, we have to do a second on that.
No, we're fine. We can second it, I guess, if you want.
I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know. Casey down is the second for that. Now moving on to our student representatives' report, we have seniors Gabby Cruzlongly and Jack Geislinger here with us today for their very last school board meeting of their senior year, and are gonna give us an update on activities at the high school.
Hi, everyone. It's a little more sparse now, so that's nice. So since the last meeting, we've had some events at the high school. We started with the MOC crash, which was right before prom. It's a program that partners with local law enforcement to show the events of what would happen in a real-life MOC crash scenario, and it was very moving, and I think people got a lot from it. And then, after that, that weekend was prom. The prom committee did a great job of putting together the grand march according to theme, and the evening was very fun, it was nice seeing a lot of people dressed up. And then, I believe it was last week, we had the talent show at the high school, and they hold additions, and people can come, sign up, and do the addition, and then during flex, they host the talent show for anyone who wants to come do it.
A lot of the tests are done for schooling so far, so I think there's a couple makeup tests, like makeup AP tests and stuff like that, but as far as MCAs for underclassmen and then AP tests, it's pretty much wrapped up, big, big thing for the end of the year. Last Sunday, Unified had a picnic just to celebrate their year. They do a lot around the school, I think a lot of it goes kind of behind the scenes, so it was cool to hear that about the celebration there. And then, we also had a senior awards night last week, so that's where they gave out all the scholarships. I think there was a large committee that kind of handed them out, but I think it's appreciative, all of the seniors that received them are super appreciative of all their scholarships and awards that were given out that night.
Coming up, we have seven days left for seniors. We have the baccalaureate on the 29th, which is a church event for multiple churches throughout the, like, the town to come together, and they hold a little service. And it's open to any seniors that want to come with their families.
Then, I think, is it Wednesday?
Yes.
So Wednesday, we have the senior sunset, so that's where, after school, all the seniors come together, and it's just kind of a, another celebration, there's a bunch of them for all of us at the end of the year, but it's kind of just a fun get-together for us, get to watch the sunset together, and it's just kind of a cool way to finish up that day. And then, we have a ton of concerts, so choirs tonight, obviously, and then band, I think, is next week, or later this week. And then orchestra concert was last week, and so kind of wrapping up all of our spring concerts there as well.
As far as the senior mindset goes, we're obviously almost done, and most of the AP testing and testing in general is kind of coming to a lull, so it's a lot of free time and just being able to spend time with our classmates these last couple of days, so that's very nice.
There is a little bit of, like, obviously, anxiety that comes along with that, big, big changes for people. I know a lot of people are talking about where they're going and stuff like that, and so I think as the end of the school year comes to close, it's like, well, that's done, what's next? And like, you only got a couple months, so you gotta leave. So I think a lot of people are kind of realizing that, but it should be, it'd be a good change for everybody, so. And then, we just want to thank you guys for giving us the time and opportunity to keep you informed on what's going on in the high school this year. It was a really good opportunity for both of us, I think, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then we usually have you stay up here, and we have something for you here in a second, but any questions from the board as you, as we, as our two representatives go off into their world and next journeys, and I can start just by saying, you know, what I got to say at the scholarship committee is really true and of our senior class, but especially you two. You know, our world needs more people like you guys, and sometimes people say that, you know, that life is challenging, and life has so many new obstacles, and while that may be true, it doesn't take you long to spend time with people like you to realize that we're in a really good shape, too. And I think it's really important for us as adults is to look at our young people and the great things that you do every day, how you navigated all your rigorous courses, both post-secondary and AP courses, how you balanced activities, and how you strive to be the best that you could be in your churches, in your community, in your, in classes. You didn't take any day for granted, you came to our school district and you showed us that by committing to being the best version of yourself, you really are committing to our future. And I really want to, I mean, I love hanging around both of you two because of your positivity, but also just watching how you respond to others, and I think our world needs to take notice of people like you two. So I know Gabby, while I let you guys share, they'll probably have some questions about your next steps, and I would like to say, when I, when I did hear Jack was going to West Point, I had never met anybody that was going to West Point, so to me, I was, you know, I was curious about that and wanted to know more about that, and spent a little time with him, asking questions. And Gabby, you're going to the school that, I'll let you share here in a second, because I don't think you've shared out loud to our group, but to the college that my daughter went to, and within thirty seconds of being on that campus, she knew where she wanted to go. You're going to a great place, and I just happen to be in that town quite a bit, so you might have a lunch date at some point.
Where are you going, Gabby?
I'll be going to Mercy of Duluth to study environmental science.
I would second everything that Superintendent Olson said. There's, it's hard to add anything to that. We're very impressed with both of you, and have a ton of confidence in you and the next step, and really excited for what life brings for you. Thank you for coming, taking time out of your busy schedules to share with us what's going on. It's always nice to hear the long list of what's happening at the high school. Yeah, one question for you. Is there anything we could do to make the talent show even better?
It's, it's pretty good, there's, they do a really good job putting it together. And like, I think a big part of the whole talent show is the talent, obviously, but also, so there's always two or three people that are like transitioning between talents, and I think that's really cool for, they do a really good job picking those people out. Here, I think it was Trevor Koenig, it was Brent, and then Sophie. They did a really good job, they just like crack jokes and stuff, it's just, so I think that's a really cool thing that they do. I don't know how they could make it really better.
Keep it up, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks for consistently showing up. You two did a great job this year of being here whenever you possibly could. I know, Jack, you had a couple athletic events, but besides that, you were always here, so that shows a lot, in really serving the high school and our community. It's pretty cool to see you guys step up, it's not super easy or comfortable, especially your guys' first time to now. You're so much more relaxed up there, which is great. But all these skills that you've used that have made you successful in your high school careers will continue to serve you as you move on in your journey, and we're looking forward to continue watching your guys' journey and see where you go.
I'd like to just say that service is a lifelong mindset, and I think six of us are sitting up here that don't have to serve on a school board, we could do something else, but once you get on that service journey, you can't get off, you can't say no. So for the rest of your life, you're probably gonna have people coming to you saying, can you, would you please, we need somebody that's got your talents and can organize, and try to say yes when you can, but protect yourself and say no when you can't. So, I would also like to take a special moment, there's two of us on the board here, Jamie Seben and myself are both veterans. I'm an Air Force veteran, ten years active duty, was an air crew member, and then was a seven-year reservist after that, and I don't know how many years Jamie has, but I know she was deployed a bazillion times, too, so, how many, Jamie?
Thirteen and a half.
Thirteen and a half. So, again, service is a lifelong kind of a mindset, but perhaps more than some other folks that don't have as much experience with the military, we really do understand what a service appointment is, and what it means, and how many thousands upon thousands of students across the United States apply and are not accepted. And we had five in central, just CD5, Congressional District Five. If you want to see who the other members are, you can go to Tom Emmer's website, I think there was one from Becker, but she doesn't really live in Becker, she lives in Germany. One from Albertville-St. Michael, and I don't remember where the other ones were from, do you remember?
I don't know.
Yeah, you were the only Army appointment, there is one Air Force, handover, yep. So it's a long, long process, you can't imagine how much your life is gonna change and how many wonderful people you're gonna meet and all the adventures you're gonna have along the way, so I'm really proud of you, and I see you've got your proper haircut already, and I noticed that you were standing in attention properly when you did the pledge of allegiance, so you're well on your way, and when do you ship out?
On the 29th, June.
Excellent, so you're ready to go, right? Okay, congratulations.
They have already said it all, but you have done a wonderful job this year, and I know that you are gonna do great things.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to add on that, but it, you know, we, we know that you guys will be successful in the route that you guys are going, so it's a, it's a positive light on the district, on the town, families that, where you guys got to, where you're at, and we wish you the best of luck.
They've said it all. Sometimes it's a challenge sitting through these meetings, so it's, when you first probably asked to do this, it probably wasn't like, but sometimes they're a little, a little tough to get through, but we do appreciate everything you do and taking the time, so thank you.
Yeah, for the board, we have a little gift for you guys to be able to prepare for your next journey, so something in there to help you with along those preparations.
I think we have one more picture in front of the big M. One more parent, there's another dad. Don't be sorry, this is your moment. I think it's been like... Well, you can stay, or you can go. I forgot to mention, we were looking to see when our last service academy appointment was from our district, and we haven't exactly figured it out, but it's been almost twenty years, if not more than twenty years. So it's an amazing accomplishment, Jack, and you really cadet, you're really to be commended for pursuing that, so thank you.
See you, guys.
Standing, so we'll let them leave. Well, Joe, I don't know how you're gonna follow that, but we have our transportation manager, Joe Kunkel, with us this evening, he's gonna give us a presentation on transportation end-of-the-year review. Those of you that were following our meetings might remember that last meeting, we approved a five-year transportation partnership contract with Ogland moving into the future again, and so we're glad to have Joe with us tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much for that. I originally, I don't know how you guys do these slides all the time, because, man, that's not my deal, and, but I put it together, and you guys put a lot of time, and I applaud you guys for doing that, but I had the good, the bad, the ugly, I said, I don't want bad and ugly on ours, I just want the good, so ours, ours, yeah, it's one slide. I was told that the longer I talk, the less tea it gets, too, so I don't know who's open for more, but some fun, I'm a numbers guy, we drive about 3,001 miles a day excluding our trips every day, and I'll do that math times 168 days a year. Fifty-four route vehicles used every day, fifty-three drivers, which means one of the drivers has to come back, whether they're in aid or whether they're in a different type of vehicle, and have to come back and drive another one for some special needs, needs. vehicle and have to come back and drive another one for some special needs. We have 13 midday routes or 13 different drivers on different midday routes. We go through 10,000 gallon of diesel every four weeks. Figure that about close to $4 a gallon. We go through 800 to 1,000 gallons of gas every 10 to 14 days. In our fuel tanks at our office, we have all our own fuel tanks. There's sensors in them, so it goes right to our fuel supplier. So we don't have to call them, we don't have to do anything. It gets on to a certain point, they just bring us more. We buy the diesel by a whole transport. We buy the transport at a time. Right now, our first route leaves about 5:30 in the morning. Last one gets back about 5:30 at night. For those of you that don't know, sometimes with No Child Left Behind and they find shelter in Minneapolis, we go to Minneapolis to pick these students up and bring them back to here because their school day is our most stable part of their day. But unfortunately, at the end of the day, we have to go back to Minneapolis to bring them back home. So that's why that driver gets back at 5:30. Our largest trip day was just last week. We had 21 field trips on one day. That's field trips and athletics. And the next day there were 20. So we had back-to-back, busy, busy, busy days. We had a driver that had never driven a field trip in her whole life, Jill Kipath, who used to work here at the school. She'd never been to the Kelly Farm in her whole life. She says, I'd like to go to the Kelly Farm. There you go. If people are willing to help out, that's really what it takes. It was Eastview to Pinewood, Little Mountain and Pinewood to the Science Museum, High School to Sock Rapids. It's random places that we go every year. One thing I added after the fact was the youth apprenticeship program that we're part of. And I can't thank the school board enough for allowing the student that we have. We have Joe Gleason that works at our place and he has changed the culture at our office. He's a high school senior that is not on his phone. He comes to work, he changes into his uniform, he looks good, he does what he's supposed to do every day. And when our older people see that in our office or in our shop, they work harder. And they did it because of an 18-year-old who's out working. I put the female mechanic up there because we have one of two female school bus mechanics in the country. They did an article on her in the National School Bus Transportation magazine, so that was a very cool thing for us. Next year, we have two interns coming because Joe is going to go to Diesel School. We always make our interns a deal that if they want to go to college, we'll pay for it for every year I pay for. You come back and work for us for one year after you graduate. Joe is going to the Diesel School up in Detroit Lakes and the next two interns, I'm not sure, I haven't met them well enough to know where they're going and what their aspirations are after. Here's what we have up on our, on our wall every day at our office. Those top left to right and then next row and next row, those tags are all have a specific purpose. Those are all our vehicle numbers. They're up there in time order. So if you happen to be the only one they're dispatching because everybody's out driving, you look up there, you look up there and all of a sudden, if, let's just say bus tag 72 is hanging there, but we're all the way down to 66, we know that that driver didn't show up. We missed something. So rather than waiting a call from the first parent that, hey, why is the bus not here? We have kind of a double check to see what happens. Those tags go up there in the AM, they go up in the midday and they go up in the PM and they're always by time order. The bottom blue ones, you can't see the numbers on them very well, but those are all our trips for a day and they have timed things on them. So we know exactly when those trips should be going and if there's one hanging there that is at the beginning and there's, when we're down to the middle, we know that we missed a trip and we need to go right now. I think I got a call at 2:30 in the morning. Said, hey, we're supposed to have two buses going to the airport right now. Where are they? So I called Jamie, 2:30 in the morning, said, hey, those two buses at the airport. She goes, oh no. So I hung up on her. And who can you call at 2:30 in the morning to be on a trip? Your brother. Matt, we got to be at the school in five minutes. Let's go. So I went to the office, pre-tripped his bus, pre-tripped my bus, hooked the trailer up and we made it to the airport in plenty of time, but that's really what that's all about. We don't have 2:30 in the morning on there unfortunately. We have GPS and speed located on every one of our buses. It's through our two-way radios. And as you can see, we clicked on one of them because we get a lot of calls that, hey, that bus is on two wheels, it goes by our house so fast every day. And we can look on here and say, okay, well, that whole trip, they went 53 miles an hour max. Or this is where the bus is right now. The bus never stopped. So we can see and make, it's a Brett Carrel Trump type thing. So as long as you call us when that bus is out there, we can say, yep, it did stop and it stopped at this time. But that is, that's probably one of our biggest benefits to have in our GPS and speed because that is some of the complaints that we used to get a lot, that, oh, the bus never stopped. Well, now, when you have GPS, it's hard to deny that it did stop or what the speed is going. For those of you that have never seen the cameras inside of a bus, it's 4K HD cameras. We have four in every bus. There's a stop arm camera. Hey, the good part's coming. It's okay. But they all have their own audio as well. So if we want to listen to the kids in the back of the bus talking, we want to listen to the kids in the middle of the bus talking or wherever, you can hear it all. You can hear the bus driver talking to the parent outside the door. It's very, very clear. One thing, we got permission from the State Patrol in Wright County is to post our stop arm violations on Facebook. All we have to do is block out their license plates. And unfortunately, I think we just did this on Friday, we've had 152 stop arm violations this year already. And that's the ones that we can catch. That's not counting the ones that are going so fast that you didn't even catch them on the video.
But why would you have to block out their license plate?
It's, they haven't been found guilty yet.
Can they send the warnings?
What's that?
Can they send warnings?
Well, we don't, we, I'm blocking it out for you guys on Facebook. The State Patrol in Wright County get the full version.
Okay, good.
I can't post on Facebook your car with your license plate because sometimes you're not driving your car. We hear that all the time. That wasn't me.
So the Wright County sends warnings or tickets?
Yeah, and the penalty is $500 and a loss of license for a year. And it's a pretty steep penalty and it might be why not a lot of people get the ticket, they get warnings, because what if mom or dad or grandma and grandpa went through, they didn't see it? But my response to them is, what if they don't see and they hit a kid? When, when do you really give the tickets? You know, this is one that will get a ticket. This is on 39, close to my house, right at the apartment there. This is a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Perfect timing. The, the, a little bit of the criticism that we got or the State Patrol is getting on that, or Wright County, is they went through the stop arm too. It's just like a stop sign, a stoplight, anything else, they make the stop, they make sure everybody's safe and they can go through, just like they can go through stoplights, they can go through stop signs. But he looked at the driver, the driver made sure the kids were safe and he went to go get that person a ticket. We don't get to find out who gets tickets, who doesn't get tickets. We just give them the video and say, do what you do with it. Oh boy. I'd do it in a minute if, yeah. Next year, with our time changes, we're thinking our first bus is going to be leaving around 6:30 AM rather than 5:30. Our last bus should be back by 4:30 instead of 5:30. The major routing has to be done by 7:10 of 24 because my wife and I happen to win a cruise to Europe. So after June, July 10th, it's going to be hard for me to do that routing from there. I'll have my phone, so if you have to call, and we've talked before when, where, but it is what it is. But for this to happen, we need people to understand that we need to know who's riding and not riding. It's so important because if we're going to, if we're going to load up our buses with K through 12 and then have a short window, we can't be going to all the places that I might ride. Just reserve me a spot just in case. If you were going to ride just in case, just call us on that day and say, hey, Joe's going to need to ride the bus today and we'll, we'll go get you. Don't make a spot just in case. We need to know who's really going and not going. In the morning, we have drop-off windows. We have it now at our middle school, high school, but that will be a change for the, for the elementaries and special needs that we have talked about. We have a number of meetings and I think that it'll be a little eye-opening for people to understand what the middle school, high school do every day, but other schools have done it. We can do it. End-of-the-day pickups are going to be really, really important because we're close on time. We don't have the ability anymore to sit at the school for an extra five to seven minutes because Joe hasn't come on out of the school yet. We need to know if Joe went home early or Joe wasn't in school today. So somehow we need to clear that up so that we go and we come back and we get the next load. The Magic School Bus, we actually bought a white bus. The logo's kind of small because when you try to put that thing on a nine-inch thing on a great big bus, it's not very big, but what we're going to do is on the front bulkhead and the back bulkhead, we're putting the big logo on there and then we're going to put a couple more Magics, every kid, every day on, on our Magic Bus. That bus is a 48-passenger. It can be used for charter trips, athletic trips, all that kind of stuff. A little bit nicer seats, a little bit lower capacity because now you have nicer seats, but it's like a 48-passenger. I showed it to Eric and Gary and everybody has great ideas. It has a wheelchair in there, so now our track team that has a wheelchair person works perfect for that as well. Our registration closes August 18th this year, which means that if you have not registered your student by the 18th of August, they're not going to have a ride that first week of school. We need to give our, especially this next year coming up, we need to give our bus drivers time to learn their new routes. They go to hoglandtransportation.com to do it. It will reopen on the 8th. It doesn't mean that if there's somebody that just moves into town and they didn't know about it, that we're not going to give them a ride, but we can't just go down every single road every single day because somebody might live down there. We go where people live. And the new bus times will be in the parent portal on August 22nd. I picked that day because our in-service where we give our routes to our bus drivers is August 21st. Next year, and I think Superintendent Olson has been giving out these little flashlights to the kids, we don't need every kid to turn them on in the morning, but it would be nice if one of them at the bus stop would have it or two of them at the bus stop would have it because our drivers that I've tested it this year has really made a difference for being able to see the kids. Our annual in-service that we invite, all you guys are welcome to, all our admin is welcome to, all the secretaries are welcome to. Gordy this year wanted to have a pig roast, so we're having a pig roast at our in-service noon to 1:00. So bring all your friends because we're going to have a lot of food this year for some reason. Keep talking or are you good Tina?
Questions from the board for Mr. Kunkel?
There's a family that they put down to ride the bus and they ride the bus very sporadically. Do you guys keep track of, hey, this person, they put down there, ride the bus 183 days and they show up 30 days? Is there any issue with that that you guys run into a lot of or is that a very, very small?
It's more, it's, most of our stops are group stops now. So that doesn't bother us if all of a sudden we go to the Meadows East and somebody doesn't ride 30 of 168 days. If it's a turnaround down on Aetna and we only go down there for you, a lot of times those parents are very, very good and very responsible at saying, okay, you don't need to come down today or I only ride on Tuesdays or I only, and that's what we need to know is that's what makes a difference. I mean, a five-minute turnaround when you have a small window is, is important. So, yeah.
And you have a mechanism for parents to communicate that easily?
Every day, they can go on our website and there's temporary changes, there are permanent changes, there's daycare changes and all they have to do is go on there. We just need to work with our school and I've been talking with Eric and Tina about, we need, if they go home early, we need that communication to us. And maybe working with IT, maybe we can get access to say, okay, did they check out? Because by the time we call at the end of the day, everybody's, everybody's gone. So we're, we're there till 4:00, 4:30 and they're gone at 4:00. So, but we'll get that. We're working on it, so.
And then with the bridge construction that's going on, I see that started in July and it's going to carry, I think, into October.
It's already taken us 15 minutes to get from Forest Street to the bridge right now.
Yeah.
It's not good. And I'm sure you saw me in the paper, you know, that, that reason of us at whatever chamber meeting or whatever it was. It's funny because then everybody else there is like, well, how are we going to ask any questions after you brought up safety and kids and school buses? We can't ask anything. But they, they really didn't care. They had, they had no care in the world for me, but he will, he will change the stoplights for us when we get close to time, but it's when I call them one-on-one rather than 500 people.
We don't want the buses stuck and kids in school 30, 40 minutes every day for first month, so.
Their response is, well, we have to do the construction.
Yeah, I understand if do the construction, but maybe there's, I don't know if there's any discussion how we can try to optimize the bus route during that month.
We thought about jet skis on the river and park the bus on, I ain't put a bus on that side, let them ride jet skis across and get back.
A zip line? Zip line?
And we thought this summer, once they start going to talk to the project managers, the people with the boots on the ground too and, and doing some, you know, hopefully some preferential treatment if they, you know, meet us and get their handshake and, you know, ask if they can, instead of sitting a bus way back, you know, 20, 30 cars deep, can you get the bus in first? So that's what, that's the angle we're going to take is more a personal angle.
By the honey first rather than the vinegar.
Yeah.
If that gets me a little bit.
Give them, give them a police escort every morning across the bridge. The kids would like that.
We have donuts Thursdays over in Big Lake anyway, so if they want to go there, we'll send them over there and we'll be good.
I have a question just about equipment. So there's been a lot of things in the legislature the last couple of sessions, changing like 15 passenger vans weren't available, so they had to buy 10 passenger vans or things like that. Are you guys finding that you're having any problems obtaining whatever vehicles that you need to be in compliance?
Six new school buses, 70, we ordered five 77s and one 84-passenger and they were supposed to be here in February. They're not going to be here till October, which is kind of a problem, but you just don't get rid of the five or six that you're going to replace with. The 10-passenger vans, and if it's over 10-passenger in Minnesota, it has to be yellow and black. So if it's 10-passenger or less, you can use it for school use. There's certain restrictions on what it says inside the door sticker, but if you're willing to pay, I looked on Lundin Ford's website yesterday, they have a 10-passenger van at $101,000. So yes, I, I could buy one, but when we buy them for normally $71,000.
That's pretty much, my understanding is that's been a problem statewide?
Yeah, it's, and Minnesota's really the only state that has a limit on size of vehicle there. So not that I would want to haul 15 students in a van because it's not as safe as a bus, but we are the only one that has to have 10-passenger or less and that's including a driver. Pretty specific make vehicle, nobody builds ones and now it's an aftermarket person that's building it.
And then my second question is, earlier in the school year, I know a lot of districts around the state were having trouble hiring enough school bus drivers. Are you, do you guys feel like you're in a pretty good place for staff?
Where did that slide go? Oh my goodness.
Saw 54 on there or 53?
I always tell people, the reason why we don't really have driver shortages is one, we have Hogland Transportation, our school bus company. We have Hogland Enterprises, our dump truck company. We have Addict Mini Storage, which is our storage building. It's 94 services. I sell ambulances for a living and we have U.S.A. Auto Rental, which is a car rental franchise. We have the building that we rent over to kids' castle. So we have five different companies and our, our business model is to make better jobs for our school bus drivers. Because bus driving is not a high-paying job. It's okay job, but it's part-time, seasonal, a broken shift. So if you want more work, we have more work. We have three people that just wash vehicles all day long. We have somebody that just rents cars. We have somebody that just rents storage buildings. So by having these other businesses, we can employ people full-time. So we have, I would guess, 10 full-time subs that just work. And at the beginning of the year, we have two subs. At this time of the year, we're back down to, I think, five, because when the homeless people turn up, that's when the last three, four weeks, five weeks, we need more people. We actually offer a $300 bonus for the last six weeks of school to just come to work. If you don't miss any days, you get an extra 300 bucks. It's just some of the stuff we do different. I don't know how much you knew about the school bus thing around. It's just some of the stuff we do different. Um, I don't know how much you knew about the school bus thing around the area, but I actually helped Big Lake and Elk River and Saint Michael and Saint Cloud with their contracts. And those people are all struggling because they won't think outside the box. It's okay to have somebody just drive in the morning or somebody just drive in the afternoon. You just got to pick the right routes for them. You wouldn't do it in the special needs world, but you can certainly do it in the, the big bus world. But people are so stuck in their ways and that's one of my biggest pet peeves. I don't like, just because we've always done it, you have to do it that way. I think, uh, Jamie and, and Eric and I sat down and we met for four, five, six times and went through pages of policy. And it's not that, you know, it was anything I was opposed to go, oh, you know, we haven't done that before, but we can do that, you know? He's got to, you gotta be willing to, to make change and, you know, one of you guys said earlier about, about the kids today, you know, everybody's kind of going, oh, our youth today. But you look at the youth that was here today, why would anybody be afraid of what's going to happen when those people are coming up?
Thank you. Any, any other comments for Joe? Well, thank you for coming. I appreciate, um, your report to us and hopefully it won't be a whole year until we see you again.
Thanks, Joel.
Thanks, Joe. We're used to people leaving tonight. So, so now we'd like to move on to our, um, innovation and leadership and our, uh, our Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder, has a number of different things to discuss with us tonight. I'll let you segue yourself from number A to number B, but, um, she's going to be introducing our new Director of Nutrition Services.
Yeah, so thank you. Tonight, we are proud to introduce our new, uh, Director of Nutrition Service, uh, position. In mid-March, we posted for this position when we decided to move from a food service contracted module and going to our self-operation. We had about ten to twelve candidates that applied for the position. And with this process, the USDA actually has some involvement in the requirements, uh, that is required of any new directors that are hired on or after July one of two thousand and fifteen. So we had to keep that in mind as we went through the process. So for medium-sized school districts, uh, the position has to have a bachelor's degree or the equivalent education credits of that, uh, within a specific, uh, food ser- or nutrition area, um, or dietetics, that sort of thing. Or they could have a bachelor's degree or similar education credits in any, um, area. But then they have to have a SNA level four certification. Or they could have a bachelor's degree or equivalent, uh, credits in, um, anything, but then have two years of relevant school nutrition experience. Or they could have an associate's degree or equivalent education experience with, uh, a major in a specific food service area and at least two years of, uh, school nutrition experience. So from that, we narrowed it down to six candidates that were interviewed by two committees. One of the committees was, was our food service staff that was well represented. And the other committee had representation from school building or a district-wide perspective. Candidates were evaluated on school nutrition experience, budget management experience, allergy awareness, communication skills, collaboration skills and presentation skills to just name a few. So Laura comes to us from, um, Eastern Carver County School District. She was one of the few that rose to the top for both committees. Um, she is the Assistant Director of Nutrition Services there, and I don't want to take anything more away from what she wants to add. So, you know, um, if there was anything else that you wanted to add, Eric, but I'll introduce Laura Whacker Hansen.
Hi, I'm so excited to be with you today. Thank you for having me. Um, cannot wait to get started. I'll officially start on July first. And I have a few in-district days. I wanted to come up and, um, have a chance to see, uh, what things look like while the students are in the building. And I just can't wait to get started. Um, like Tina said, I come from Eastern Carver County Schools as the Assistant Director there. Um, I've been there for five and a half years. Uh, my background, I have a bachelor's degree in nutrition. I'm a registered dietitian. And I have a Master's of Business Administration from Dominican University in River Forest, Illinois. So I'm really passionate about school nutrition and I just can't wait to, uh, lead this new chapter for the district. So, thank you so much.
And I just think it's, uh, today is, uh, is very fitting. You know, we have our food service. Um, many of them are head cooks and second cooks, uh, in, in our attendance and, um, our admin assistants. So it just shows the, the team that you're coming to is, is a team that, um, is really excited about that passion that you brought to the interview and just the professionalism that we see, um, in the things that you are doing in your current district. And we are very, very proud and happy to have somebody of your caliber come join us and, and lead us. We all want to be taken care of, uh, both, you know, the staff, uh, and families and students. And we know that you're going to do a great job doing that.
Any questions I could answer for you?
Any questions from the board? Other than just welcome.
Thank you.
I think you're joining a good group of folks, a tight group of folks. Um, I'm confident that everybody will welcome you. And this is also a place where you can use a lot of imagination and creativity. I think, um, Superintendent Olson has set the tone that, you know, if somebody has a good idea, they can work outside the box a little bit and, and see, you know, see if it's feasible, you know? So we're excited to see what you can come up with. This is a big journey for us, making a switch with our food service plan. So we're excited to have you and, um, hope you can start even sooner.
That brought on the house in the back there.
Get to work.
So informally, yeah, we, we're trading some days between us and Eastern Carver County. So when they have their replacement, she can transition them as well. So just like I said, informally working together to kind of make sure both districts' needs are met.
Thank you very much and we look forward to hearing more from you as you get your feet wet and make some plans for the transition. So come back and talk to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I still have another budget item to go over next, but I don't know if the food, uh, food staff wanted to, um, welcome Laura out in the hallway. You could do that.
They can stand in front of the big M. Thanks for coming.
Being here and greeting Laura, that's so, so cool.
It is really nice.
All right. So my next topic is, uh, to go over if you wanted any changes to board pay. You know, as you know, right now we're developing the budget, uh, which will go to the board for approval. I'll do a preliminary review with you, uh, at the first June meeting and then have the budget approved at the second meeting in June. But we talked about this a little bit in January and, um, from what I recall, you wanted to bump this to maybe May to have a, a future discussion as we get closer to the budget, uh, development process, if you wanted to change the board pay. And I just listed, listed what we've done in the past. We've always looked at the CPI rate and that was four percent. So if you wanted to make that change, just wanted you to have some, give you the permission to have some discussion tonight. And then I also attached the board's supply budget, uh, for this year. And I was just going to make the same budget for next year, unless you had any thoughts or questions for the, that you wanted to change for the next school year.
Open for discussion for the board.
I think it's working where it's at. We'll keep it at zero, keep it a flat rate and find if that.
This is, uh, we always get kind of quiet when we talk about board compensation because it's a touchy subject. Um, I think the take-home message is we are substantially under, um, what board compensation is for the rest of the state and we're fairly comfortable being there. So, um, at this point, I think we're going to, uh, probably just tell you to press on with the data that you have, um, knowing that we are under, um, and we're, we're okay with that and we can explain that to our constituents as well. So is there any, any further discussion about board compensation?
I'll say one thing, rather than saying that we're under, maybe we should claim that everybody else is over.
That's a different perspective.
No.
Actually, my, um, I've actually forwarded through the legislate, through my legislators, I think that board pay should be standardized statewide um, so that it isn't one district, um, you know, giving a huge amount of money from their general fund to their board and another district not giving them anything at all. I, I would be in favor of some type of guidelines or roadblocks, um, for the whole state. Because I think it would put every district in a better position, but they haven't listened to me. So I may, may forward that again this year. And, um, as a, maybe as a delegate, uh, at the delegate assembly or one of those.
I did have a couple of conversations with people after we talked in January. Um, people have interest in that topic, I guess, that were kind of interested in where we landed. And, and the take was that, you know, we don't, we don't want people running for office because we bumped this thing up to ten thousand dollars to compete with Anoka or something like that. And so then the, the next conversation was around that CPI, the CPI adjustment. And that felt reasonable, um, to that person. So I, I imagine we'll probably have some more voices as, as we, as the board changes over the years. But I'm completely comfortable with leaving it flat. I think that's very respectful of this district and what we're trying to do here.
I'd like to see legislators come down to ten thousand dollars apiece.
What about benefits? Okay, we're good.
The session is how long? Any other discussion about, um, and Tina, certainly Tina has her documents attached there. You can peruse those more at your leisure.
Yeah, so the board supply budgets mainly, um, MSBA-
Open the supply budget, yeah.
Your MSBA dues, um, the printing of the board minutes in the newspaper, uh, any supplies that might be needed. We did name tags one year, um, so doing those as new members come on. Any travel or training that you guys want to partake in with MSBA, um, that's in your budget as well. So.
And am I correct reading that, that we're using about half of what you've set aside for us?
Yes. And I think, um, this budget includes when we paid dues for C and we canceled that membership. I can't remember exactly right now off the top of my head what that, um, membership cost, but-
It was around six thousand dollars a year.
So, um, you are, we're not seeing that cost in this budget.
We do have a big expense coming up, um, not a big expense, but we have a, a moderate expense coming up in June when we do the, um, volunteer and donor, um, ceremony or, or gathering. Um, so that's how, we're going to have some food there and, um, we're working, Devin and I are working on, um, invitations now. And we're, you know, doing direct invitations to all of our donors and all of our volunteers. So, you know, if everybody came, we would have a couple hundred people. Um, so it's not like a small, and that's just the people that have donated or volunteered in our district. It's not everybody who, you know, come and shake hands and be a part of that. So just a, just to grasp what we have coming.
I'm just, I'm glad we're in a good position financially for that. And I think that's an important, um, place to spend some money to thank the people who are supporting programs that we would not have without their support. So, um, I, I think that's a, I think that's money well worth spending. So, um, any, any other discussion about the supply budget or? And I think that kind of stabilizes through the years too, because if we have a new board member come on, we have a lot of expenses with their training and things at the beginning, but then, once we all get trained, you know, then we're just doing additional trainings as needed, that sort of thing, refreshers. Yeah. So, okay. Um, thank you for that. Now we're going to welcome Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, to the podium. He's going to, uh, discuss our food service master agreement.
I'd cheer Zebra with members of the board, Superintendent Olson.
I just want to note, there is a little bit of an error on the agenda right now. That is this, um, school board pay resolution instead of the-
We have the wrong document linked? Is that what's going on?
It was there correct originally. The master agreement, if you scroll down, I think you can click on it. That was just a little out of order.
Okay. All right. Um, so I'll be up here for a little bit with you. I have a couple of topics to share. And so the first one is, um, that we do have a, uh, settlement with our food service employees, our school service employees, Local Two Eighty-Four. Excuse me. Um, part of the agenda packet tonight included a, um, a summary of the tentative agreement. And so I'll just briefly review that with the board, answer any questions the board has as well. Uh, so the tentative agreement was reached on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four with the food service employees. Uh, and it was ratified by the employee group on May ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the essential financial changes to the agreement include the following. Um, in year one, on their salary schedule, which is called Appendix A, eight percent on all sales. Um, health insurance was zero percent increase in year one for both family and single. And then on Appendix C for longevity, there was an addition of a five-year increment and also a five cents per hour at each increment, uh, beyond the five years. Uh, for year number two, there was a, um, three percent increase on all cells for Appendix B. Health insurance, uh, went up. Um, and of note, again, for almost all of our bargaining units, um, they have Me Too language with the teacher contract. And so, uh, the teachers established this rate, uh, in their settlement, which was sixteen percent increase in district contribution to family coverage in year two and nine hundred seventy-five dollars a month, uh, flat rate for single coverage in year two. Uh, Appendix C for longevity increased, uh, five cents, uh, per hour at each of those increments in year two as well. Significant change here for retirement, uh, retiree health benefit. Um, and so, uh, there's a little bit of horse trading that went on between the district and the union on this one. Um, so there was a short-term increase contribution for current, uh, retiree health benefits from, going from seventy-five percent to one hundred percent of the contribution granted to active employees. Uh, there's roughly about ten active employees who qualify currently. Uh, however, that, uh, is now closed to enrollment, um, uh, for new employees, uh, beginning June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And thereafter, we established a new retiree HRA health benefit effective July first, twenty twenty-four. I'll come back to that topic later because we do have a memorandum of agreement that buttresses this, uh, agreement as well. In terms of language item, I'll just, uh, briefly go through these, um, uh, job posting. Uh, we went into the twenty-first century and now are posting jobs only on the district's website. Uh, jury duty, uh, the food service group did not have jury duty procedures and protocol in their contract language cleanup. We adjusted the years throughout from, uh, to the appropriate years. We clarified chain of command, um, i.e., um, Director of Food Services or Director of Nutrition Services, who you just met. Uh, we cleaned up gender throughout. We replaced salary with wage throughout because this group, uh, has been transitioning from a salary concept to a wage con- concept for a couple of years now. Uh, in terms of leaves of absence, uh, there was an increase in the amount of unused sick leave allowed to accumulate from ninety days to one hundred and twenty. There was some contradictory language to board policy that was cleaned up in terms of probation dismissal and layoffs. Um, the, um, there was an update to the request for payroll deduction authorization remittance that, uh, now aligns with state statute. Um, in terms of retroactive pay, this was new language. And it clarified that retroactive pay following the settlement of master agreements is dispersed only to current, uh, employees and those who are retired in good standing prior to a successor agreement being ratified. And then finally, um, in term of, in terms of appendices, um, modified Appendix D, the transition to pay for hours worked. Uh, mentioned earlier, salary to wage concept. And then finally, we retained Appendix E, the School Nutrition Association certification. That, when it was originally adopted, two years ago, was adopted as a four-year agreement. And so, uh, no changes were made to that. In all, all, excuse me, in total, the total package value over two years is fourteen point eight-four based on the MSBA model. Any questions from the board on the tentative agreement with the food service group at all?
Are we going to, um, motion and approve these individually or as a group?
I would, I would recommend that.
So, um, at this point, we have, the master agreement has been presented to the board for food service. We have a first, a second?
Seconded.
Moved by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving the food service master agreement as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero.
Um, second item, uh, also related to food service is a memorandum of agreement. Uh, again, that it serves as an addendum to the, um, uh, master agreement, which was just approved by the board. This allows for a one-time election of those retiree health benefits that I mentioned earlier. As we went through negotiations, the union requested, uh, when we, uh, settled on that, uh, transition from, uh, the existing retiree health benefit to the HRA model, that, um, current employees, uh, be allowed a one-time election to, if they, if they should choose to adopt or transition themselves, uh, as individuals to that HRA model. And so, uh, And so we were agreeable to that as a district, and, and so we put together the memorandum of agreement, and it's titled "One-Time Election of Retiree Health Benefits." The employees must notify the district no later than June 14, if they are going to use that, that one-time election to transition themselves to the HRA model.
Is there any questions or discussion from the board on the memorandum?
It's a one-time, yep, so basically, upon ratific, or approval of the board by the contract, and then also this addendum, or this memorandum of agreement, we communicate with the union, the proper paperwork to fill out, so that they can, employees who choose this, and we don't think it's gonna be a large number of employees who go in this direction, but there may be a handful that do, and so we'll, you know, provide them the information of how they can demonstrate their election.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, so we have before us the memorandum of agreement as an addendum to the food service master contract. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mark Branson, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero.
Right, moving on to the next item, we also have a memorandum of agreement regarding summer positions for our ESS staff. We currently have an open contract negotiations with our ESS employee group, however, in negotiations, one of the things that we have arrived at is that there is mutual interest in deleting, in its entirety, Article 10, Section 2 of the ESS contract. That language in that section was crafted previously to essentially establish the terms and conditions for hiring and staffing summer programs. This is mutually beneficial for both parties. On the district side, it allows us to use our job posting language that is in the contract at all times, regular school year and summer, and then for the ESS employees, it alleviates some potential burden in terms of the ability to qualify for unemployment benefits as established by state statute last year. And so both parties agreed to this tentatively, however, because we are close to summer and want to finalize those summer employments, this memorandum, we're fast-tracking this one so that the board can adopt it, and we can finalize those, the staffing for summer.
Are there questions for Mr. Daniker on the memorandum for the ESS contract? And if I'm correct, this is a memorandum then, that will be attached to the old contract, not the new one?
Correct, yep, and then...
And it will expire at the time that the new contract is settled?
Correct.
And we are in progress with that at the moment, hopefully that will happen soon.
Hopefully, hopefully this is the shortest memorandum of agreement ever in existence, yes.
So if, if it's short, why would we...
Because it's summer, I mean, I can let him...
So the, the, what we have in front of us is that we're at May 20 right now, and we want to finalize staffing for summer. We do not expect, frankly, that the ESS contract will be settled, settled by the time summer school begins and ESY begins, and so we just want to make sure that we're above-board and transparent in those dealings.
I think there's also, it has something to do with the unemployment?
Yes.
Well, the old contract was written, there were technicalities under which it might be advantageous or not advantageous for someone, their situation applying for the unemployment, and so this clarifies things for both the district and the employees, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Correct, yep.
Any further discussion? So what we have before us now is a memorandum of agreement as an addendum to the existing ESS contract, which is open for renegotiation, to be approved.
So moved.
Moved by Mark Branson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding for the ESS as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Now we're going to move on to policies.
All right, so two weeks ago, we had two policies come forward from our policy committee for first read at that time. The first one's up on the screen right now, it's 613 graduation requirements. In the discussion with the policy committee, and in the days following the first reading at our board meeting two weeks ago, it was, we were informed of the fact that we had some document historical issues, and so what we want to do is, we're gonna keep 613 and first-reading status, we're gonna bring it back to the policy committee for our first meeting in June, to review the discrepancies between the documents that we reviewed last time, or in the May meeting, and then we'll bring it back to, potentially for a second read at our June 3 meeting. So no action tonight is recommended.
Okay.
And then the second, second reading up for tonight is Policy 536, Turning Point ALP Early Graduation. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for early graduation for Turning Point ALP. Due to student medical, social-emotional, family, or financial obligations and accreditation structure, students at Turning Point ALP who qualify can be approved to graduate early from the Monticello School District. Early graduation is not applicable any earlier than the start of the third trimester of a student's academic school year, or senior year, excuse me, and students may be considered for early graduation upon meeting the following requirements, and I expound on the requirements therein. This is up for a second reading tonight, and action would be required.
So do we have any comments or discussion questions from the board?
On, on this one, it's, it's good. My only request was that C been an A, because it was the line of when all standards of credit requirements were met as the first requirement to set forth the process, but it's still in a line, you need all of them anyway, so, I'm with it, it is.
Any additional discussion, questions? Okay, so we have Policy 536 before us, to be approved.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of Policy 536 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. Is there any additional discussion or commentary from the board? Finding that our agenda is complete, we are adjourned at 7:29. Next school board meeting is Monday, June 3, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.